Back to...
We'll learn a little bit more about that tonight.
Okay.
One of the things on that email that came, that I think you sent through, that had the declaration of emergency.
Yes.
It said that also contained a notice to employees. And that wasn't on, or at least I couldn't see it. So were there two items that were attached to that email?
You got everything that I received.
Okay.
We also sent out an email to our employees today and to our managers, different, same issue but different subjects covered. And then we have some additional information we'll share tonight about programs and services and protocols.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, other council concerns? Nothing? Okay, let's move into our work session items then, with the residential code modernization packet, which we just, I think, had put in front of us minutes ago.
And what you have, I believe, is a lot of the questions and comments that Mr. Pauli had sat down with, I think, most of you, if not all of you. So we don't expect you to be able to absorb all that tonight, but Dan's going to give you an update on everything that we have kind of gathered and changed and amended and additional work that may be done, so.
Okay, shall we do that now?
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time reviewing this. I hope you've had a great time.
We haven't even seen it yet.
So, to start as a review, there's really two topic areas that this project focuses on. And tonight we'll primarily focus on the second topic area, open space requirements, as this has been the area where council has had the most feedback and questions. So, and within that, if you recall, we had a series of questions. And so the primary question that we're still dealing with is, what counts as open space? And particularly, the big question, the policy question that we've been talking about is, to what extent should private yards count as open space? So, the draft code recommended adding allowance for 10% of lots, 6,000 square feet or larger, single-family lots, that is, to count towards 25% minimum open space. However, based on the feedback, I understand the majority of council direction is to remove this allowance, keeping the current policy, which is that private yards don't count towards 25% required open space. That said, I do want to share a bit of information and research that I found following up on this question. The first question is, does it really matter, one way or the other? Which is a great question. So, to answer that, again, certainly back on this idea that these code changes primarily affect about 63 acres that are currently within the city limits. And of these, because of zoning and expected lot sizes, I'd expect very few, if any, 6,000 square foot or larger lots. So, it really doesn't have an impact, one way or the other. So, with, so going through with council's recommendation of keeping it how it is, seems prudent. And so I look to council tonight for confirmation that that's the direction that you'd like us to take back to Planning Commission as they make a recommendation to you. So though the real world, how applicable it is in the real world is limited, I did research on the likely impact on a real project that existed, like in a new urban growth area or something like that. So to do this, I looked at two examples of existing residential developments that I've used throughout this project to kind of run through scenarios and see how different code changes might impact them. These are the 79-lot Renaissance at Canyon Creek, which includes a number of 6,000-plus square foot lots, as well as the 103-lot Arbor Crossing subdivision, which has a few 6,000-plus square lots, but primarily is less than 6,000 square foot lots. So, for a development like Renaissance at Canyon Creek, not having the backyard allowance would require about six tenths of an acre additional of open space. So to kind of visualize what that would be, is the Arbor Crossing Park, at the entrance to Arbor Crossing, is about half an acre. So it would be about that size that you'd be looking at additionally. For Arbor Crossing, on the other hand, with the fewer 6,000-square-foot-plus lots, the difference would be about 0.22 acres, or about a quarter acre. So, that example shown here of an open space along Orleans Avenue in Vilbo would be an example of what additional you'd get not having that sort of provision. And really, the question then is, what does, what, how does that impact the rest of the development? You're not likely to have a developer reduce the number of lots. Rather, you'd most likely have a developer reduce the lot size of a number of those lots down towards the minimum in order to compensate for that additional open space. So another question that Mayor Knapp brought up in our discussions is, is some current, current is, is, he reminded us of a past policy discussion about the per-unit open space required for multifamily development. And so what the code currently says there, which as drafted, we've taken out to, and substituted this percentage approach. But what the deleted code said was that they require 1,000 a square foot, 1,000 square feet of open space per unit for fewer than 10 units, 2,000 square feet per unit for 11 to 19 units, and 3,000 square feet per unit for 20 or more units.
I think those would be 300 and 200, not 2,000.
Is that, thank you, yes. I'm reading it, but, yes. 200 square feet for 11 to 19, and 300 square feet for 20-plus units. Thank you. So I did run through some scenarios of how this, these different, how this change actually would look on the ground. The first scenario is for a larger development, such as development of the site on the south side, at Montebello, on the south side of Wilsonville Road, as multifamily, which you're looking at 300-plus units in that sort of scenario. So the proposed code would require one additional acre over, over the current code that I just explained. So that's equivalent, a good example of one acre park is Walt Morrie Park in Morrie's Landing. However, running some other scenarios where the majority of the site is SROZ, including one where I ran it, is like a three-acre site where all but six tenths of an acre is in the SROZ. There are some of those smaller site scenarios where the new standard would require less, even down to 2,000 square feet. However, those aren't likely to be developed as multifamily because of where they are in nature and historically what we've seen. So, outlined three options to kind of, for council to consider in, on that policy question. The first one would be to leave as drafted, which would result in as few as 2,000 square feet of open space if it's a small project on one of those mostly SROZ sites, where the rest of that 25% open space that's required would be provided by the SROZ. Another option would be to add a requirement that 12% of the area outside the SROZ, even if the open space requirement is met by the SROZ, be developed as usable open space, which would be, in the scenarios I ran, at least 4,000 square feet of usable open space, often more. And that 12 and a half percent comes from being half of 25%. And that other 20, half of the open space would be, would, the SROZ would be able to count as that. The other option would be to add back the requirement for multifamily development as really a floor, where, in the scenarios where it is more, it would remain more. But in the scenario where it's less than that, it would then default to that requirement. So, interested...
Default to which requirement?
To that, to that 10, for, for the current code requirement of, for 10 or fewer dwelling units, 1,000 per unit, then the 200 per unit, 300 per unit.
So I'm a little confused. You said for a smaller one with 10 or fewer units, and then you quoted the 11 to 19 and the 20 to 30 unit standards.
So, the idea would be, in that option, we just take that current language and put it in as a, as if it goes below that current standard, then that current standard would be triggered regardless of the number of units. That, that's what that option would look like.
And that's the third bullet option?
That would be the third bullet there, yes.
Okay.
And we can circle back on that. I did want to just cover a few of the other odds and ends that we looked at. There were a number of clarity and questions, and just readability questions that, that we added. So, the first one is, there were some inconsistencies about the range of units. It referred to four to 10, and then 10 or fewer. And so that's all been corrected, and all of those instances are consistent now with, it's 10 or more units, and then less than 10 units, is the wording that we landed on there. Also, the mayor pointed out, there's, in his reading of it, there were, and which were some valid points, that it was confusing about where that, how some of the different open space requirements related to that overarching 25% requirement. So, added a number of references to really clarify that relationship. And then, when it comes to the new adjustment process, added language that really calls out upfront the intent to prioritize the provision of open space in the adjustment process over, over minimum lot size. So with that, happy to have discussion or answer any additional questions.
Okay, Councilor Linville.
Yeah, I just have a couple. First, I'll go backwards, because my memory's not that good to go back all the way where you were, but to the discussion you just had. And as I looked at these, which are new kind of documents, so I'm just kind of seeing them for the first time. But on the page D17 that you gave us, as well as the additional pages that have corrections on them, it, it says 0 to 1, 2 to 3, 4 to 5, 6 to 7, then it goes 10 to 12, and then 16 to 20. What happens when there are units in between those numbers?
That's, that's one of the questions that we've had a great time addressing. And so, in reality, it's a mute point to fill those because there is no, no land map that, on our comprehensive plan. That page you point to, those are our comprehensive, our density ranges that are put on our comprehensive plan map. So, those other densities don't exist.
There's no zoning designation?
There's no, there's nowhere in the city that's designated, you know, eight, nine, or eight to nine units per acre.
And what would happen if we ever got to that place?
So what...
We'd have to go back in and change the, the land use plan?
That would only happen with a comprehensive plan change, which would be coming back to council anyway. So the discussion we had at Planning Commission is that if that were to happen, it'd be a good time to just, it'd be easy enough to insert it at that time. But we don't anticipate that ever happening at this point. So, it really creates a lot of confusion, as like, why it's there, if it's there, if there's no purpose to it at this point.
So, going back to the percentage of open space question, and the three, and the three options that, that you suggested. Without doing all of the math, I'm trying to figure out, just taking, for instance, the, on, it looks like page two...
Two of 39.
Yeah.
Two of 33, yes.
Yeah. It looks like the third bullet, where it says 20 or more units, 300 square feet per unit. So, that's roughly 6,000 square feet, is that right, of open space that would be, am I figuring that correct?
Yes, for, for 20 units, it'd be 6,000 square feet.
Okay. And so, in the top bullet, where it says leave as drafted, which would result in 2,000 square feet of usable open space, it says in, outside the, is the in not supposed to be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Outside the SROZ, with the rest of the 25% required open space provided in the SROZ, that could be anywhere from 1,000 to 6,000. Is that what you're saying? I mean, would we ever really have, I mean, you'd still have to, I, I guess I'm not getting, what would be the 25% of the gross, gross space, or 25% of what?
It'd be 25% of the space that includes the SROZ. So if 50% of this site is SROZ, then that SROZ could more than meets, you know, the 25% open space requirement. So this is getting at, if you have so much SROZ on the site, how much open space, or usable open space, do you actually have outside the SROZ?
And, in, in your, in your, you know, your expertise, would you call the SROZ usable, I mean, for families and for the community?
The primarily, primary purpose of SROZ is for natural resource and habitat preservation. There are circumstances where there's trails, especially, there's a couple of different types of SROZs. There's what's called the riparian areas, which are often steep. And so typically, those aren't very usable. You know, you're not accessing them. Maybe there's a short trail into them, or there's a trail at the top. Then, versus like a forested, like the 10-acre forest in Vilbo, where there are trails through them that are usable and accessible. So it depends on the type of SROZ. But primarily, in most of these scenarios where this would apply, it's, you're talking about like the Beckman Creek Canyon and stuff, where it's not that, it's not really usable, besides maybe a short trail into it.
Yeah. And, and I guess my, I guess the comment that I, that I'd like to make is that we, we, we're committed, I think, I am committed, to an issue of livability in the community. And while I think the SROZ may vary from space to, from space to space, I have concerns about using that as open space. I just have concerns about the amount that we would use. And if it's a small lot, in bullet, the first bullet, if it's 2,000 square feet of SROZ, then there's no, there's no usable open space.
So, the idea under the first bullet is that, at bare minimum, even if you had, you know, 80% of the, of the property was in the SROZ, in no circumstance would you have less than 2,000.
Okay.
Even if it puts you at, let's say, 82% of your site ends up being open space.
Okay, okay. That's what I was trying to get. And then, in the second bullet, the requirement would just be 12 and a half percent, rather than the 25.
So that would be, because half of your 25 is required to be usable. So that gets to, okay, you have your 20, your 25% open space, that's, we're talking about the second bullet there.
Right.
Is that, so that half that can be any type of open space, that can be SROZ, but that half that, but you need half of that usable, and that half needs to be outside the SROZ, developed as, as active recreational space.
But it's possible that you could get more than that 12 and a half percent if you deemed that some of that SROZ was usable, correct?
Right, if you had a trail or something.
And you'd have to draft some findings to show how that was the case.
Correct.
So the second bullet would indicate that in the, the example project you're talking about, under the second bullet, you would have more usable open space than you would under the first bullet.
Yes, you'd have at least double.
You'd have at least double, under that scenario, with the 12 and a half percent number. The third bullet, and, and just for the sake of council, the history that I remember of discussion that I communicated with planning was that there was concern about, what about larger developments? And it's a little hard to explain, but suppose you had 12 units on one floor, then you'd have a certain amount required. But what if you built a three-story multifamily on that same footprint, and then you had 36 units? If your open space requirement is geared to the size of the lot, suddenly you have three times as many people living there, and presumably, three times as many people using the limited amount of open space. And the idea of the 200 feet per, or the 300 feet per, was that as you had more mass, even if the footprint didn't go up, that we would require more usable open space. And I'm not really clear with, in these, how that's working.
Yeah, I think functionally, particularly in the scenarios that this would apply to, is the, that, that unit count is relatively fixed, whether you have, based on the amount of land. Because the number of allowed units, the maximum and the minimum, is tied to the size of, of, of the land. There's a direct relationship there. So whether that's all single-level spread out or all stacked on top of each other, it's the same number of units on the same amount of land. And so that same percentage of open space would be constant.
So it doesn't matter the type of development?
Right.
The amount of space is the same.
Okay. The other conceptual piece I'd like to get out there is, planning is talking about, well, there's 63 acres now that these rules likely would apply to. Well, what about 10 years from now, or 20 years from now? What if we get a five-acre annexation request, or a 15-acre annexation request? Or, you know, what is the potential for the scenario to be different in the future than just the 63 acres that we think we know all about right now?
Yeah. There, there's really, from what we know now from the urban reserves, anywhere out around Frog Pond, I mean, it stands to reason that those would follow the Frog Pond-type zoning. It's possible that someone could request PDR-type zoning, but we'd anticipate that residential neighborhood or some sort of other new zoning specific to that master plan to apply. There's the smaller urban reserve on the, on, south of Wilsonville Road, west of Willamette Way West. It could be a scenario where the PDR-type zoning would apply in the future, when that was brought into the city. There's also a potential, there's another urban reserve north of Vilbo, that is of a size that a PDR-type scenario could very well apply there, too.
We have had interests from those folks.
So, not a lot, but it seems to me to be suggestive that we need to be thinking about the universal applicability of these standards, not just say, well, for the 63 acres, they work okay. I mean, or it's unlikely we would have any other thing because we think we know what's going on in the 63 acres.
And I would say, a lot, in, in terms of running the scenarios, that the way it, the, it would be, it functions similarly as those larger sites that we currently have in the city, such as, so the rules that would apply, for example, that site on, at Montebello, south side of Wilsonville Road, these rules would apply similarly to that as they would the, that area west of Willamette Way West, for example.
Councilor Linville.
Well, I, I just, I, I agree so much with, with your scenario of being forward-thinking, and not just thinking about what we currently have on the map. And, and unless I am really mistaken, my, my research said that Frog Pond, not, not the, not the ones that are proposed, but those lots are averaging 7,200, over 7,200 square feet, no?
Frog Pond West?
Frog Pond West is a higher, lower density than east and south will be. Are you talking about Frog Pond West?
It's our, that's our, that's in the process of being developed.
Those are larger lots.
Right.
Right.
Right. But, and the only, the only thing I'm saying is that it, there's a possibility in the future that we may have land that would be comparable to that in lot size. So to say it's not likely that we would have 6,000 square foot lots...
I would be shocked if we were allowed to bring in lower density like that in the future. We've already been put on notice that it's going to be, that that's not going to be allowed, Metro won't allow that.
Low, what do you mean, lower density?
7,000 square foot lots will not be the standard for east and south. It'll have to be a lot more efficient use of land.
Oh, I see, okay. I thought you were saying the opposite.
Or it won't come in. We have more flexibility with west than we do with south, that's correct.
So, so, going back to these, these three scenarios, in, in your opinion, what is the, what is the, the most generalizable to all different kinds of properties, not just the three that we have, and would still provide enough direction and give us the most livability in terms of open space?
I think to ensure it's kind of that level of open space that the council's envisioning and has been discussing the last couple of work sessions, that middle option seems like a, a good way to go.
It guarantees more usable open space.
Yeah.
If that was the concern, then I think that, from a policy standpoint, would make sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I keep thinking that 4,000 square feet is still only a tenth of an acre. Yeah, but you're talking about a small project. Talking about small projects, yeah. Councilor West.
I have a question, kind of along the same lines, from Councilor Linville. What of these three options would strike the best balance between all players that are involved in development? So you have those of us that have to live in our neighborhoods, you have the city, and then you have builders and developers and businessmen and women. Which one do you think, in their interest, strikes the best balance and is the fairest for all three players? Not fairest, but like, for their interest, maybe.
So, I'm not sure, I don't know, that's a tough one, because developers are trying to maximize profit. And I'm not sure that that's a community standard that we really, well, I'm not going to say you don't care about it. I'm going to say that has less of a, probably a policy position than the livability of the neighborhoods. At least traditionally, that's the way Wilsonville operates.
I'll reword it. Is there one, is there one of these options you feel like that, and I'm just asking to ask, it's not necessarily what I even think, but I'm, is there one of the options that tends to maybe satisfy, maybe strike a good balance between keeping livability, and then also, keep, also maybe helping keeping housing a little bit more affordable with, for how it's developed, I guess, is how I word it.
Affordable housing is not found in developments like this.
No.
I'm sorry, just, I mean, it's not. Affordable housing is what we have across the street. It's the things that we're approving tonight in our council packet. It's some things that we could do from a policy standpoint, but you're not going to find it in 5,000, 7,000-square-foot, single-family homes.
Lots.
Lots, sorry, yeah.
Lots, yeah.
Some of those homes are 5,000 square feet, right?
They're going to be $400, $500,000 houses. If you want to call that affordable, that's, you have the right to do that, but...
There's other things we could do on the affordable housing stuff that you will hear about tonight, but it's not going to be found in traditional, single-family subdivisions.
Yeah, and as far as, I mean, going either way on, on like these is not going to make a large difference, one way or the other, in terms of cost to the homes.
The key policy question is, what do you want as a council? What is your desire for your community? Do you want a more livable space for folks? If so, then that's the policy direction that you'll want to go. It's not to say that we don't care about developers, you know, making a profit off their investment, but that policy, that policy position probably isn't as, as much of a precedent as livable neighborhoods.
I, I guess I word my question the way I word it because we, as a city, work with both parties. We care about the livability and the people that live in the city, but we also interact with businesses and business community, too. So finding a way, I guess, a pathway that allows us to be, and I don't know if, when... So finding a way, I guess, a pathway that allows us to be, and I don't know if one amicable or not amicable, I don't know how much developers care about how we make, what decision we make here or not, and that's not going to impact my decision, but finding a way to be thoughtful to both parties, I guess, and how we do it. Or if there's an easy strike and balance or decision on how we approach it.
No, I, I would leave that to you all. All I will say is that we have not had any problems with developers not wanting to build in Wilsonville.
Right.
Councilor Leehan?
Except.
Microphone, please.
When, with regards to Frog Pond West, if you recall, the, when we had the property owners and and then Meadows and Landover saying they wanted large lots, they wanted really big lots, they wanted more expensive houses than their houses. They didn't want neighbors who were as poor as them in their $400,000 houses. They wanted neighbors who were living in, who would live in $700,000 houses. And and it was the builders who came and said, eh, we can't build that product there. We can't build that product on Beckman Road. We can't build you 700,000, $800,000 houses on Beckman Road or on Stafford Road. We might be able to build a few of those. You remember that guy came and testified? He was a builder, a developer, who said, I can build that, those expensive houses, maybe a few in the center, maybe some on Beckman Creek, not on Beckman Road, not on Stafford Road. Because somebody who can buy an $800,000 house is not going to want it on Beckman Road because they could buy a house on the river or one outside of town with three or five acres. So he can't sell that product. That was the message we were getting from the builders. It was not the builders who were saying, we want 10,000 square foot lots. It always is density that drives it, from the builder's standpoint. That's what it was with Villebois. Villebois from the, from the get-go, from when we had David Leland and did that original damage area master plan. It was, in order to pay for this infrastructure, to build the bridge across Beckman, to build the bridge across Barber, those are expensive things. In order to carry the cost of that infrastructure, in order to build anything at Villebois, you had to have X number of units, this many dwelling units. So every time we're looking at increasing park space or open space, we have to say, well, but where are we going to put those other dwelling units? Because in order to make this pencil, to pay for the infrastructure to get to Villebois, we've got to have X number of dwelling units. And that drove the situation, that drove the decision-making from, from the beginning of the concept plans with David Leland, all the way through with Rudy.
Rudy.
With Rudy, who became the master developer. But but always developers are looking at the, at what, how many units they can get that will make it pencil, and it's not, it's not three big multimillion-dollar houses, that's not where they make their money.
I think.
That's not what I'm saying necessarily.
I think, if I understand what you're saying, is is the balance between whether or not something's feasible from a development standpoint versus, on the other hand, a more livable neighborhood.
Right.
And what's, what's the push there in terms of, does it become feasible economically?
Because the push is usually, from the development side, is more units.
Right.
Because if they can build three houses, three $500,000 houses on X amount of square feet, it's better than if they can only build one McMansion-y house on that same lot. They'll make more money on the three houses than on the one house.
Well, I understand that. And and I, and I guess, because you, you told me this morning when we met, that the, you're not, you may, you're not going to lose, like, if it's a planned development, you're going to have the same number of units and houses, right, in that, in that area? They may have to tweak the lot sizes, but we're still going to have the same number of units. So it's not all of a sudden going to be like, three big McMansion houses or big lot sizes. It's just going to be tweaking it so we can fit the usable, make it, and make sure it's usable green space, right? Yeah. So, and I was just trying to make sure that we were just considering all players and parties involved, and you're right, and what I was getting at. Now, and I, since I belabor that too long, I'll tell you what I, where I'm leaning, and I'll share with the council where I'm leaning. I don't, and I just don't, in my gut, like the idea of someone's yard that's fenced off being used as usable green space. And it doesn't feel right or make sense to me. And and I don't know, it maybe sounds like that's where other people on the council are leaning to, but I see it has, it's been, it's been, we've gone back and forth, we've had it multiple ways here in the city. But I think that having usable space that can be counted and fairly used by all residents is the appropriate way to do it, and is the, and I think it also make a neighborhood more beautiful and more livable. And so like you were saying, that's, that's kind of the way I'm leaning to, is the option that allows us to do that the most. And so I'm kind of feeling like I'm not seeing the benefit for us to use backyard, personal, private spaces, open green space.
So it'll be option two, from what I'm.
Option two.
Well, these three options here.
This is a different question.
This is a different question.
This is a different question. We got two questions, and the three options are on one of the questions. And the backyard, private space, as counting its part, is, is the other question.
It's another question. That's about usable green space.
Yeah.
Yeah, not about yards.
Usable by people or by habitat?
This is, this is recreational, human recreational space.
Recreation, yes.
Councilor Akval.
Now that, I feel like we're doing a big circle here, but, and, because at the beginning, you said, I mean, essentially, that 10%, that's, that's kind of been removed, correct, from, that's not the recommendation for this piece at that time, right?
10%?
Isn't that what, isn't that what we said here at the beginning?
We took the yards out.
We took that off the table.
Yes, yes, the 10% for the yards.
Is that what we did? That's right. So that's already been taken off the table.
I just want to confirm that that's the direction council wants to go.
Exactly, yeah. And I mean, like, because as I was listening here to Councilor West's comments about all of that, I understood that that's already been.
Okay.
Taken off the table. And so what I understood us to be discussing right now is, how do we calculate that open space and specifically how the options with one and two, that we're talking about, the the white outlined bullets on page two of this handout that we have?
The middle option.
Exactly. As far as how it relates to the SROZ land, too, right?
Correct.
That's kind of our, our peak point right now. Okay. Just wanted to throw that in there for some clarification.
And if you're looking for the option that gives more, creates more community, I guess, or adds more value for the end user.
For people interacting, moving around.
That second option will give you the most usable space.
So I, I would like to make a couple of comments. I was on DRB when Villebois started coming through. I participated in workshops and, you know, the concept that was embraced, you know, was this idea that we're going to have probably more people living on smaller lots, but that we would accentuate the public green space and open space to counter for that, and that we would create a neighborhood, you know, where people didn't have to own the open space in order to use open space and to benefit from having that. And a couple of you live in Villebois. I don't, but it appears to me from the outside that it has worked reasonably well, and residents have accepted that, and they know their neighbor might live close, but they've got lots of outdoor space to go to and to take their kids to and to, you know, recreate on. And so that whole concept, you know, I think is embedded in our whole idea about Wilsonville and how we might be different than if you were to decide to live in Oregon City or Beaverton or Lake Oswego or Westland or Tigard or wherever. And so it's, to me, I am in favor of continuing that perspective as we look at this, and that we should be true to that value that has proven to be very desirable within our community, and try to structure this in the way that best does that. It's always a balance. It's always a trade-off. You know, how much space can we afford to use that way? How can the developer still have financials that enable them to go forward and, and create the actual buildings in, in that neighborhood? But I'm going to have to rely personally on planning somewhat to give us some input about, you know, whether we're meeting that balance and being true to that ideal, and at the same time, not going so far overboard that we are damaging our ability to, to have high-quality development done in Wilsonville. So, I mean, that's kind of the picture to me. Thank you. So let's do just a straw poll here, just for the sake of the planners. Is council comfortable with the removal of the 10% of private yard space from the usable open space calculation?
Yeah.
I'm seeing nods all around. Okay, so you're on the right track there.
Correct.
So the second question is about how to calculate which are the three bullet points there. I'm, it is very confusing, and it's hard to look at the numbers and in extract, okay, that would produce, you know, this kind of result or that kind of result. And, and even with pictures, it doesn't really do it. So, you know, I, I think I heard Councilor West kind of trying to ask for a little bit of guidance from planning, and, and within that value statement I just tried to make, you know, do you wish to give us any other guidance as a council?
I would say that a middle option would get, in a typical circumstance, in most circumstances, the most land as open space, and it's still, in the scenarios that I've thought through and looked at, it's still an amount that would, that doesn't take up such a large amount of the available space that I want to allow a developer to build something. So, so is council clear enough that they want to, to take a straw poll on this, or do you need more time to think or to, questions to ask, or?
So is council, based on this discussion and, and the perspective from planning, comfortable with the second option, the 12.5%?
Yeah, sounds great.
I'm seeing positive all around on that. So does that enable you to move forward?
That's what I needed. Thank you very much for that discussion.
All right. Thank you very much for planning work. Now that we've done the easy stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We can talk about housing.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and councilors. I'm Kimberly Ribold, senior planner with the city here tonight, to provide you with an update on the equitable housing strategic plan process. With me tonight is Deb Mahoff from Community Task Consulting, who is part of the project team working on developing this plan. So before you tonight, your staff report highlights the work we've been doing since we were last here in October, and also includes the first draft, which is kind of our working draft of the plan. This has been reviewed by both the project task force as well as the planning commission. And we are here tonight to get your input on a couple of key outstanding items. Based on this input, we're going to be working on incorporating various aspects of the comments we've received into a final document that we will then bring forward to the planning commission and back to you all for a public hearing this spring. So the key three items we're looking at are some refinements we've made to the strategic actions based on your last, that have happened based on the input we've received since your last review in October, some recommended performance measures, and you have a handout in front of you tonight that lists some measures based on the policy objectives that Deb will walk through with you, as well as just some key feedback for how we want to go about monitoring and updating this plan as we move forward and start undertaking these actions. So I'm, at this point, going to turn it over to Deb, and she's just going to take the slides we have and help, we'll, we'll just walk through these topics to facilitate the discussion. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So we came to you in October. You provided us some direction and guidance to think a little bit harder about the set of actions that we had brought through the process so far and make sure we were really picking up on a couple of policy objectives that maybe were a little light in the previous section. So programs or actions around homebuyer assistance, and especially first-time homebuyer and three-level homebuyers, also thinking about additional ways that the strategic plan and actions you could take to prevent displacement, economic involuntary economic displacement of folks, and also preserve some affordability that you already have. And I'm not talking about affordable with a capital A, but just market rate affordability. And then something, I'm not sure it was touched on a lot in our last discussion, but we heard very strongly from the last round of community input, was a real strong desire for the city to look to facilitate more options for people with physical disabilities or people who would like to stay in, in this community for the long term as they age and maybe can't get around quite as well. And that often showed up as a desire for single-level living or, or some sort of standards that make it a little bit easier for people's family members to visit them and for folks to stay in Wilsonville. So we took that to heart. We did some additional community outreach, as Kim mentioned, and then looked at the actions we had. In some cases, the actions that we had already down, we sort of beefed those up a little bit to address some of these issues, but then there was still some gaps. So we've suggested, and in the draft plan in your packet, adding these four additional actions to the sort of actions to explore. These all need a little additional research, and they'll need some decisions from you along the way and how you want to approach it. But looking at home buying as a twofold issue, one is, are there, is there a partnership, especially with the land trust, that you could strike to try to help bring the cost of housing down? That's what land trusts often do. And newly constructed houses just have fixed prices that it's hard to, it's hard to get that cost down below just what they cost to build. So that's one. And then the other is on the homebuyer side, what sort of assistance, either technical assistance or financial assistance, might sort of be part of a program? We heard from some current renters in the city who think about home buying, that they maybe need a little bit of help in figuring out which direction to go. So financial is one piece, but also just some support and understanding how to buy a home in Wilsonville and where to buy a home and what would be a good fit for them. And then reducing risk, displacement risk and preserving affordability. We've suggested a preservation tax, a housing, exploring a preservation tax abatement that would be looking at sort of market rate units and what could you do to help secure those for longer-term affordability? And through that, also maybe make some physical improvements to the sites, the ones that are maybe aging a little bit. And then to come up through some of the nonprofit housing developers, that there may be units that were built in the 90s, so they're fairly new and in pretty good condition, but that's a while ago now. So they might be getting to that point where they're ready to remodel, and that often triggers increase in rents when remodeled. So could you sort of explore a way to not trigger that increase in rent, but hopefully get the rebuilding? And then building for accessibility, aging in place, and I should have said with all of these, we took these to the task force and the planning commission, and the task force especially had a lot of really good ideas about how to make further improvements to how we frame these actions up, including this last one. There was a discussion about the action you all really need to explore, sort of, what's the approach you're going to take? And it's probably a balance of incentive, regulation, some sort of assistance or technical assistance, and just kind of understanding the best, best path forward to getting more single-level living or accessible or visible units in, in the city for new or existing units. for new or existing units. And actually, the task force had some really good ideas about how that could even apply to some of your mobile home residents and doing retrofits and things that some of your community partners are doing. So, these are in the draft plan, ideas for making improvements that will probably be made for the final draft that will come to you. And then at the last meeting in October, you also had some questions and some thoughts about, or queries about funding and resources to implement some of these actions and then also where in the city some of these actions apply? Would they apply citywide? They apply in certain areas? So, we've settled that out in the draft plan for every action we've identified geographic applicability and then we also have a section in the draft plan about a variety of funding tools and resources that could be made available. Any questions or concerns about the addition of the actions to your suite? And I should have mentioned, page 59 of 174 in your packet, which is also page 11 of the draft plan, has all of the sort of actions, the implementation actions for priority and then further actions to explore.
I would like to ask a question. Over the last several years, we've had multiple instances of residents come in front of council and say they have lived here for a long period of time and all of a sudden their rents are going up by 50% or 100% or 200%. And at least in some of these instances, you have a scenario that you seemed to touch on a minute ago, talking about older units that were built maybe in the 90s or some time, but are in need of renovation or upgrade or freshening of some kind. What has tended to happen is that out-of-state investor individuals or groups have swooped in and purchased them and done what in some cases are fairly rudimentary renovations and all of a sudden the rents go up. So, do we have a strategy contained within this that would give us an avenue to try to avoid losing those more affordable units to the proverbial, if you wish, outside investor and being able to preserve those units within our community and perhaps encourage them to be upgraded, but not to the extent that all of a sudden they're displacing people because of the significant rents? And so, was that discussed within these strategies or how does that look?
It's, Kim, you might want to answer it. I mean, it has been discussed to some degree and this new action around thinking about housing preservation tax abatement was really aimed at that. That's using a financial incentive to encourage the right sort of action. And I would say too, I think, so that might work with some private for-profit owners. The other piece of that, it might also encourage some of your nonprofit partners to engage in a conversation with some of these private landowners and try to either acquire those units or strike some other partnership with the private landowner to help with that. And then lastly, and Kim, you might have some more specifics, but some of the state legislation that was passed last year about sort of capping rent increases has some provisions in there about when that gets triggered and it's, it's my understanding, it's not quite as easy. I would look to others to verify that, for someone to do rudimentary or sort of icing on the cake type improvements and call that a reason to displace all the residents and I think there's a limit to how much they can actually raise rents.
So, does the enterprise zone legislation come into play on housing at all?
Enterprise zone or opportunity?
Opportunity zone, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know, we're told that downtown Portland has blanketed the city with opportunity zone designation.
I believe, I'm not as familiar with all of the specifics of that program, but I believe it's meant to encourage.
Same idea with housing.
Yeah.
Miranda's got a good background on the opportunity.
Hi, Miranda. Come on up. Perfect. Welcome.
Thank you. Miranda Bates-Chell, Planning Director with the city of Wilsonville. I'm not an expert in any means, but I have a little bit of background knowledge on opportunity zones. Essentially, the city of Wilsonville is part of an opportunity zone. These were designated a couple of years ago after federal legislation enacted this program. Essentially, what it does is it enables someone to invest property gains that they've realized, capital gains from a property investment. When they sell that property and they get their capital gains, they can reinvest that money into an opportunity zone, essentially investing in development in that location. And by doing that, they do not have to pay the taxes on those gains. That gets held for a certain number of years and then when they do pull that money out, their tax liability is lower than it would have been if they never invested in the opportunity zone.
And if they keep investing, then there's none, right?
Correct. So, there's a certain point at which they then don't ever, I think, have to pay taxes on that investment, but they have to have been invested in the opportunity zone for a long time. So, in terms of its impact to housing, I think it depends, depends on the types of projects that if folks invest in an opportunity zone, if we wanted to advertise our opportunity zone and try to work on specific partnerships with specific developers to try to get affordable units out of it, then that is a possibility in terms of potentially getting affordable units, but I don't know that it's necessarily an avenue for affordability as much as an avenue for investment.
So, would it only apply to new construction or would it apply potentially to this scenario of older construction?
My understanding is it can actually be remodeling. So, it's about the dollars of investment in the area as opposed to whether it's a brand-new building or a renovation, but it is like hard development.
It's more of an economic development tool, not necessarily an affordable housing tool.
Well, I'm not sure it's being used that way in all other locations and that's kind of why I think we need to understand the nuances of it and whether it might help, especially in the case of a sizable development that exists but needs updating, you know, and if, I mean, so the total price of the thing might be such that it would shelter quite a bit of cash and even if you were not scratch building, so it was not all new construction cash, some of it would be just buying the asset and some would be to update that asset. Can we, can we put requirements on the applicability of that program within the city?
That's a federal law.
I don't think so.
No. They either qualify or they don't. It's not, it's not a city-run thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But we could partner with somebody. If we had some local programs or incentives, we could certainly partner with someone to get, I mean, it's going to be mostly market-driven on the private side, but if we wanted to partner with somebody and have a specific outcome in mind, we could certainly do something like that.
All right. So, I don't, there's lots of possibilities, but I don't want our plan to close the door on researching how and if those possibilities could work to our advantage and that's my point.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think that's, making sure that that's either covered either in this action or potentially we could see if there's another action, particularly surrounding partnerships, that that might fall into, but I think that's a really good point that we can explore. Thank you.
Councilor Lindvile.
Are you, are you done with your presentation?
Or did we just pause?
This is, this is our pause to talk about actions. So, we do have a couple of more points. So, general comment? Okay.
Anything else about actions or can I move along to performance measures? Okay. So, you may recall, we got cut short last time, we may get cut short again, talking about ways that you could measure your performance or progress toward your equitable housing strategic goals and your strategic plans. So, we have taken the liberty of thinking through sort of how you might do that and what might be good measures. The handout, I see you all have, mine's printed a little bit differently, sort of, we've come up with this idea of tying your performance measures to your policy objectives. You have seven policy objectives you all gave to us and so sort of tying progress or performance to those. We took some initial ideas to the task force in January. The task force was quite amazing in coming up with really innovative and thoughtful ideas for how to measure progress against all of these policy objectives and we took that information and we sort of ran it through our, what are our data sources out there that are easy to get to, easy to understand and that we could sort of imagine the city being able to sustain over time. So, that is sort of how we ended up with the various, sorry, the various measures that are in here and, yep, go ahead. Yep. So, I don't, I think all of these, for the most part, we've identified sources that we think the city could, city staff could easily access and compute. There are a couple around, number three, expanded affordable homeownership opportunities around mortgage application denials and types of lending versus conventional or VA or FHA loans. I think we just have to do a little more digging to how easy and accessible that data might be to staff and how frequently they would have to update that. But for the most part, we think these are a pretty good set, but as with, as with the actions, there will be further conversations that would be needed with council as staff start to develop a way to track and progress this, or, sorry, track and figure out whether you're making progress. So, a couple of questions for you is, do these measures make sense? That's one. The other is, when we were last here, there was a little bit of a conversation about wanting to set specific metrics and often in our world, that means setting specific numerical targets for things. Some of these ideas about measurements that we've come up with, you could set a target if you wanted to. You could say, we want to have 20 more rent-regulated affordable units in the city in, I don't know, 2030 or something. That would be really easy. Some of these, not so easy. It might be that better as an indicator, you might want to just track progress and trends over time, just so you can understand how the market's responding and if you need to sort of come in and try to intervene to ensure that your future is as equitable as you desire. So, our second set of questions is, you know, is there a desire to set specific targets or just track trends over time and how would you like to go about deciding that? And does this feel like the right set of measures? I know this is all coming at you quickly, but I'm keeping track of the time here.
Looking for discussion now or?
Yes, please.
Comments? Councilor Lindvile.
Well, please take into context, all of my comments are coming from a position of not being involved in development of the policy objectives.
Okay, so. Yep.
So, I was not involved in that at the time that it happened. So, one of the items, I observe, I watched the planning commission meeting and their discussion that they had about the equitable housing plan and they had quite a few questions and concerns and it didn't seem like they came to any solid conclusions. I mean, theirs was a lengthy discussion as well. And I know that there was at least one commissioner who said, before this goes to the council, should we be doing a whole bunch of other work of trying to come up with some things that would work and how are we? So, has the plan changed since that time outside of the strategies? That's just one question. Or is this the same plan that they looked at?
This is the same plan.
This is the same.
So, they reviewed not this filtered down list of performance measures, but we had some feedback from the planning commission, or the task force that we shared with them. I believe that's what we included in your packet as well and I think in terms of that discussion, they seemed to think that we were on good direction for looking at the set of performance measures. A lot of their comments were focused on some of the specific actions that are in the plan itself.
Yeah, I didn't get the sense from their discussion that they felt like there was closure on all of that and I just wonder for the council, if we really want to leave that work with the planning commission before we kind of put a stamp on this. So, that's just a question for the council. It's not really a question there. So, I want to go kind of just make a couple of comments about what our city, and I'm struggling with not having metrics, but that's my background and I have to, you know, I live with measures that are, you know, really measurable and then you know you've, the strategies you've put in place are, you can assume have moved the metrics. But I guess I would ask, and I'm asking my colleagues as much as I'm asking you, what are our city goals? We know right now that our half, about half of our residents leave this area to go to work. So, are we building housing for people who do not work here? And so, should that be part of what our strategy is or are we looking for something that will be a stimulus for us to increase employment, increase jobs here so that we actually have more residents who live here and work here? Or are we, is our market for equitable housing to house people who don't work in Wilsonville? And if that's the case, then we need to know who that market is, not just who lives here, but the people who are, who are, who are working and moving. Do we want to better serve the residents that are currently here or are we looking at people who are in the future? Right now, we have one of the highest percentages of renters compared to the rest of the state. Do we want a community that has a majority of renters versus homeowners? And I know that there are some policy goals here that look at that, but as I look at the performance measures, those don't look like measures that would say to me, oh yes, we have increased the opportunities. It may mean that we have increased mortgages, we've increased sales of homes, we've increased, but I would say, does the percentage of homeowners versus the percentage of renters, is that a better measure of saying, we're looking at increasing the opportunity for homeownership? I don't know. Do we, and then there's that whole issue of serving homeownership for median income residents and I wonder, is that the group that we're trying to serve or are we trying to serve those that are subsidized housing, low-income subsidized housing, which are anywhere between 31 and 50% of the median income in the city? If we want to increase ownership of the median income folks in our city, which is the predominant, that's the middle, so we assume that they are probably, and I didn't, I'm struggling with trying to find that number, but it's about $60,000, I think, per year annual income that is about the median income for the city of Wilsonville. So, if that is, then are we trying to find affordable housing for a person who makes $60,000 and lives in the city of Wilsonville so they can buy a home? Is that our population? And if so, how do we get to that? What can that measure of income afford? And so, what kind of housing are we looking at that would, that would be ownership versus And then, I guess the last one is, what are solutions in this, in our housing plan that relate to employment and housing that will improve diversity? And I don't know that, I see the number seven, that is through the lens of social equity and inclusion. I don't know that just looking at integration and demographics over time, racial, ethnic, compared to the county and the region, I mean, those may be, those may be specifics if we could get a little bit more specific about them. And I guess overall, my concern is that, and I heard the planning commission talk about this too, and there was this issue of inclusion, which I really don't think it's an issue of inclusion. I think it's an issue of diversity and that we don't, I don't want to see in the city of Wilsonville for us to create pockets of poverty. So, to build a housing building for low-income housing that is that kind of specific, I would be concerned about that. And I, and I think that whole issue of can, can we figure out a way to have multiple kinds of housing within a single area? kinds of housing within a single area? And you, you talked about this, I think, in the, in the TOD area of having, but it's kind of Charlotte's idea, where you're not going to find people who can afford a $200,000, $800,000 house that's going to live over in the area of the TOD. They're not going to do it without something. So, so I wrote myself a big note, can we be creative? You know, can we figure out for the, for our community, how can we do this in a way that's exciting and diverse and new? And, you know, it's, it's not just, let's plop another apartment place over here and another, you know, a big, big lot housing development over here and whatever. I mean, I live in an attached home on nearly a zero-lot line, but my house is lovely. It's lovely. And so it's, you know, there's, I think there's just wonderful ideas that could happen as a result of it. And I don't know whether that comes in between what has been presented in the plan and what ends up in the measures. And I just, that's, that's, and it may be. So those are my comments.
So you, of course, have answers to all of those questions, right?
I do, I don't.
We'll get with you after.
We probably don't have.
Yeah.
But those are very good questions. And, and we're going to have to figure that out. And I think one of the things that I honed in on is, you know, are these mature enough in the presentation to be ready to come to council? Or is there more work at figuring out what Wilsonville has, what Wilsonville wants, what Wilsonville needs yet to be done before it's ready to come? And I don't know that I know the answer to that. Councilor Lee?
Well, the, the one that seems glaringly absent here is, and I don't know if you were thinking it would be under seven with equity and inclusion, but where's our mental health housing and supportive housing? Because Wilsonville plays a large role. We made a big commitment to that in Villbois. And we have a variety of housing types, from, from single-family, very protective housing to semi-protected for the mentally ill and developmentally disabled. And, and I don't really see that represented here in ethnic diversity, because that's not so much the issue. But we have at least five different levels of support for the mentally ill, of, of types of housing with, from, from very protected to semi-independent. And, and that's true, certainly in Villbois, because it was part of, of mental health housing that that land came from. But, but I think we, we do, we do a lot of those functions throughout the community as well, in our other HUD facilities. So, so that's a population that isn't in here. And I don't know if you're assuming they're in number seven, or they should be in number eight.
So my understanding is that in terms of an actual metric or number that we can track, is that that's not information that we've, like, we can track our number of subsidized affordable units that, but I understand that we've been a little more intentionally vague about the mental health housing and tracking where exactly those units are, just from a?
No, no, I'm not saying we would track where they are, but we should know how, how many.
How many?
We, we know that because we, we went out and visited them all. We sent councillors out to visit them when we were doing the tax abatement for the various facilities in Villbois.
That's a, that's a good point. So I think we can look to see if there's a home for that and something that we're tracking and how we can access that information.
And it's, you know, it's one of those things, are we, is what we provide in Villbois, which is what was there from the get-go, the original 10 acres or whatever, is that sufficient now? Will that be sufficient for evermore? Or should we be planning for additional units somewhere else?
I think that's good feedback. And we do have one option that speaks to planning for future urban, our future planning areas, so, short-term, that's Frog Pond, east and south. So I think that's maybe a key consideration that we can add as we look at what kind of targets or what kind of housing we would like to be sure that we're planning for in those areas.
Councilor Rehne?
I'll be quick, because of time. I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, reading through the, the packet in preparation for tonight's meeting, and looking at some of the measures that were suggested, I think that the task force did a great job of coming up broad list here. But my initial concern was, ooh, you know, are we really able to access some of this information and privacy concerns and stuff, too? And so I think that this list that we have now tonight, this grid, has kind of massaged that down, whittled it down to maybe some attainable items. And it does seem, you know, with the, the conversation and questions tonight, that maybe it's still in that process of being massaged further. So it seems like that needs to happen. As far as the targets, or looking at targets or trends, I'd be curious what other cities are doing? Because I could see an argument for both. And so I don't know that it would be all one side or all the other. You know, with having specific targets, it's, it, sometimes it's nice to have a hard and fast goal, because otherwise, what are we doing, you know? But then, of course, some of these things, there's many influences that are going to drive the, the numbers up or down, and that are out of our control as a city. And we are one part of that, you know? And so it's not to say that we, we have no action at play, you know? But I think to, to understand we're, we're part of the larger system here. And so I guess, going back to being really intentional with the goals, we said that they, they speak directly to the work that we believe we can do. It seems like maybe it's a mix. And I would be curious what other cities are, are doing and how they're addressing that as far as targets and trends.
I don't mean to get in, but, but Councilor Lindvile brought up a lot of good points that deserve a whole lot more discussion, but we just don't have the time tonight. But I, so I don't mean to be unresponsive to her issues, because she raised many, many important things that we need to discuss.
Chief among them is, what are we trying to accomplish?
Right.
What, what is our key kind of objective with our housing?
And if I could just make one, one really quick comment. A lot of places use the job to ha, employment, job to housing ratio. Yeah, I'm sure you're familiar with that. And I think ours is somewhere around 5.88%, something like that, is it? I don't know exactly. I don't even know where it is. But I know that our employment rate increased, is increased at about a little less than 6% per year, maybe. And so at a minimum, if we use job to ha, we could look at that little piece to, as a, as one of the measures, which might.
The job housing thing is a little difficult. Metro doesn't use that anymore, because it's so hard to say why somebody moves to a particular city. We know that we get a lot of people that move here, because their spouse works in Salem, their spouse works in Portland. So the jobs housing thing is, that's going to be a difficult metric. But more important might be looking at, what are you trying to achieve with your different goals and your objectives in terms of our specific housing issues? Are we trying to get people out of apartments to allow them to buy homes? A lot of the things that you mentioned are things that we should be trying to answer.
Well, yeah, yeah. Because the other one, I mean, the, the one that, where we did insert ourselves in it was, was insisting on Fred Meyer's doing affordable housing as a part of that project. And that was for workforce housing. That was specifically for workforce housing. So it wasn't intended to be owner-occupied. It was for, it was so people who worked at Fred Meyer's would have the ability to live nearby.
If they chose to.
If they chose to.
Yeah.
So it was providing that workforce housing, which, which was specifically renter and affordable renting, that, that your average retail worker could afford to live here. It's the same issue that Lake Oswego has, where, you know, no one who works in their stores can afford to live in Lake Oswego, because it's all, it's so much owner-occupied and very expensive.
So I think what we need to do is just take what we've heard tonight, try and distill it and come up with answers. I, I wanted to leave at least seven minutes to Mr. Montalvo, who worked really hard on a coronavirus PowerPoint presentation that I'd like council to see here.
All right. Well, we will be back with some additional feedback, and it might make sense to think about another work session with you all.
I think, I think it's going to require one more work session. And I would encourage council to maybe send along any additional thoughts, concerns, or questions that you'd like us to answer with some of these priorities, especially the seven objectives that we're looking at right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Performance areas. Thank you.
Joe? Come on up, Martin.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Martin Montalvo. I'm the Public Works Operations Manager. Been asked to come and speak to you this evening to give you an update on the city's response and preparedness for the COVID-19 situation that we're dealing with. I believe there's a PowerPoint that we're going to share with you.
Yeah, that you're going to share.
No worries. Figure this out eventually.
Yeah.
Okay. So as I'm sure you're aware, there have been a couple reported cases here in our community, and city management asked us to give council and the community an update as to what we're doing as an organization to kind of prepare and respond to the outbreak in the area. So just some general background information, I'm sure you've seen this, I believe Councilor West is a medical professional, so all of you have probably just seen the generalities.
And Lindvile.
And Lindvile, I did not know that. So all of these things are just general commonplace information. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but we did want to kind of reiterate a couple of the major points. Especially because some of the, the affected communities are represented here in Wilsonville. So I'll just pass through this, we just wanted to share it with you guys. So just some primary guidance, what we're relying on is the most current information is from the CDC and the Oregon Health Authority. So we are getting, and actually just received, I was reviewing it a few minutes ago, a daily sit rep from Clackamas County Emergency Management, State of Oregon Public Health, OHA, and then the tri-county health official, who's kind of overseeing everything for the tri-county area. They're actively monitoring the information. The report we just got now is there's a third reported, a validated case in Clackamas County. That was just a few minutes ago. The tri-county health official has the responsibility and the authority to either do voluntary or mandatory quarantines as they become identified. And they are tracking and investigating any cases that are being reported by local health professionals within the region. Okay? So to date, to give you some ideas of what's going on in the area, Clackamas County, this morning, at around 10:00 AM, declared a local state of emergency for Clackamas County. So what they specifically committed to, as you recall, we, when you declare a state of emergency, you have to enumerate what powers. So they've committed mutual aid agreements, they've committed to allow staff to redirect funds as needed, and order other measures as necessary. The last one's very broad, it's something that can't necessarily be foreseen, but gives you a little bit of leeway. And then the county health officer and disaster management, they're administering the local response in the area. All of the county and city emergency managers are all communicating, sharing information routinely. There's been several meetings, we had three of them last week in preparation to this, and there's a couple more this week where we're, we're all communicating. So when we talk about risks, we want to talk about the four major things. First of all is probability of contact, how that affects the city as a, as a whole, what engineering controls we can put in place to kind of minimize that risk, administrative controls we can put in place, and then general PPE, so that if someone does have to come in contact with risk, how do you minimize that for the individual? So engineering control. So I, I do want to let you know, we have an active and aggressive janitorial program here at the city. So we have in-house janitorial staff, and nightly, they are cleaning all of the city facilities with extensive disinfection. We use industrial-grade disinfectants. One of the things that we're kind of shifting the work around is, we're having the janitors focus on the public points of contact for the next few weeks, so that they can give those areas a very deep and thorough cleaning. So doorknobs, pushbars, countertops, anywhere where the public comes in contact with. We would normally clean off individual work desks, but we're deferring that to staff to deal with their individual work areas, so the janitors can really focus on the public contact areas. And then the other thing is, the transit division disinfects all of their buses nightly. They are also using a very aggressive, well, it's not aggressive, but it's accepted disinfectant, same product that we're using. And then the other thing, a few weeks ago, when this started getting spun up, our facilities started looking into their magic crystal ball, and we started ordering a lot of supplies. So we are very well-stocked. We have in roughly the equivalent of 800 gallons of industrial disinfectant. It's concentrated, we can make it at demand, and we're staffed with enough of the dispensers in all of the facilities that we can dispense this as needed throughout the city. We also have a pretty healthy stockpile of hand sanitizer, which we started dispensing through targeted dispensation at public contact points, and then speaking with staff as to what's appropriate uses for the hand sanitizer and any of the other cleaning products. So administrative control. So what are some administrative controls? So the first thing we started looking at as last week was updating the city's continuity of operations plan. So defining chains of command, who's in charge, who's on first, who's on second, third, lines of succession, and then key staff. So the management, we started looking at this last August. Some people updated it, some people got friendly reminders on Friday to finish updating it. But we're actively updating this and hopefully have this updated by the end of the week. The other thing is, we're monitoring probability contact of staff with the virus. So if someone is visiting a known area, the State Department or CDC says there's active infection in these areas, we're monitoring that, and we're putting an administrative control in place that says, you might want to take a few extra days when you get back. Okay? If you're doing international travel and you're going through a central travel hub, or maybe you get waylaid in New York behind customs for a little while, you might want to take a few days before you return back here for your own health, as well as the rest of the, of the community. Other thing is, we're actively encouraging staff, if you're sick, stay home. We don't need you here. No one is so invaluable that we can't miss you for a few days. Other people will pick up the slack. The other thing we've been doing is, in making sure supervisors are clear, you have the authority to send a sick staff person home. If someone is in your office and they're showing indications that they're not feeling well, feel free and have a discussion with them and send them home. And then lastly, we're enforcing, practicing good hygiene with friendly reminders throughout all the facilities if you haven't noticed them yet. So PPE. So PPE is really best used for those who are going to have the most contact with it. So we're reinforcing with our janitorial staff, the appropriate PPE they're supposed to be using. So the CDC is saying that masks are not very effective for trying to prevent contamination, but for the janitors, who are putting down quite a bit of industrial cleaner, it is something that we're asking them to wear when they're putting down this cleaning agent. It's safe, and it normally can be dispensed without a mask, but when you're putting out a lot of it, I get concerned about their respiratory, so we're having them wear it. I'm covering this, so if you see the janitors wearing a mask, it doesn't mean they're sick, it just means they're putting down a lot of this stuff, and we want to make sure we're protecting them. Other things, we've made sure that we've got enough hand dispensing units at all of the entry points to all of the facilities, and we're sufficiently stocked. We've got about 28 of those drum dispensers for the entry points. That should keep us going for a while, and we have an additional order that's been placed. So actions to date, I think we have sufficient supply, supplies on hand. Managers have been advised of what preventative measures are, and I'll go into in a second response protocol in case someone does start getting sick or is diagnosed.
Martin, we've got three minutes.
I'll be there.
I need to be downstairs doing a speech.
Okay. Staff managers, email's been issued. We've got advisories posted throughout the city. Couple restrictions, so the play area at the library has been closed, the toys have been put away, and playtime at the library has been canceled. Couple pictures of some of the signs you might see. These are, these are in every restroom and sink in the city right now. This is at the library, and these are at every entry point to all of our facilities. Response protocol. So in the event someone is diagnosed. Response protocol, so in the event someone is diagnosed, county health official has the authority to either involuntarily or voluntarily quarantine them. They are screening anybody they have close contact with. The city PIO has got information on any closures or other activities that we're doing, and then facility staff's disinfecting all the facility.
Okay, I'm going to jump in really quickly and just hand out to you, because I know in the interest of time, this is what we are posting on the city's website, it's got most of the information that Martin just covered with you, but I wanted to make sure you had a copy of it as well.
Thank you.
Been pushed out with Facebook and every, everything that we've got. Okay, good. And repeatedly, probably, right? Yeah, so it keeps floating to the top of everyone's feed.
Absolutely, and we're linking it to all of the CDC and county health information as well, so people can find that.
So, the links, they'll know where to go.
Good.
Well, updated as new information is available. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you much. We'll call adjournment at 6:56. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that'd be good.